Yeah, yeah, okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for Monday, October 16th, 2023 to order. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting, if there are anyone who plans to do so. Seeing nobody, I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Anybody for public comment and announcements prior to us getting into our comments? Go ahead, Judy. Yeah, should come up to the microphone.
Hello to the board. I'm Judith Ford, President and Artistic Director at the South Harwich Meeting House, and I'm very pleased to announce our opening season coming up. We have actually three weekends in a row, and we have some phenomenal programming in that wonderful historic building. We have our very first jazz concert starting on the 21st at 2:00 in the afternoon on Saturday with the Art Ensemble of Cape Cod. Phenomenal performers, phenomenal jazz people, one of which performed with Buddy Rich all across the country for many, many years. Very excited about this Art Ensemble concert. Our second is we have a huge Halloween event that we have, this will be our third, actually. If anyone hasn't been to it, adults, children, and beyond. We have a wonderful historic ghost tour beginning at 6:00 with all our historic characters at 270 Chatham Road. And we also have a pumpkin contest, which will be announced in our concert. And then we have an absolutely wild concert from 7:30 to around 8:30 or 9:00. If you haven't been to it, I would encourage all of you to come. And the third thing is we've begun on our, again, on our series. We have a chamber concert series that we started two years ago, and this year we're doing a special for, there will be four concerts available, and the first one will be on November 5th. So I would love everyone in the town to support this historic building. We are all volunteers that run it, and the programming is absolutely, it's spectacular. We always meet our standard of doing performance that is the highest level of performance and also the most unusual, and a great asset to the town. So please join us at one of these or all of these if you can, and I'll leave these posters in the back for anyone who wants to look at them.
That's great. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you so much.
If anyone hasn't been, check out, it's beautiful. It's absolutely stunning in there. So, thank you, Judy. So in terms of public comments and announcements, the next Select Board meeting will be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Robert Thomason, Oliver Snow Road. And this may not be the right place for it. I missed the meeting. Two weeks ago, I was out of town. But I wondered if it's possible to put a hold on the construction project at Wixend Dock, because I feel the public was not informed enough about what's going on. And we attended meetings at conservation and waterways. A number of people objected to it, and our thoughts and ideas were just negated. I understand the contract's been awarded, but if it's possible to put a hold on it and reopen it to public meetings, I think it's very important.
We can add that to an agenda item, but it's not obviously on our agenda tonight to discuss, so we can follow up with the town administrator, Joe Powers. Joe, did you want to comment on anything?
Is it Mr. Thomason?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we met earlier in the hallway. I had mentioned that the board awarded the contract two weeks ago, that the harbor master has wide latitude. I'll connect with John and can certainly follow up with the board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Hi, my name's Brian Wentworth. I was here a couple of weeks ago. I won't take up too much time regarding this topic, because it sounds like there is discussions going on about the rec department situation. I did want to give a little updates, a couple updates on our end. We, my wife and I have made efforts to contact the rec director. We're planning on attending the rec commission meeting next week to voice concerns and offer solutions and volunteer help. We spoke with other parents that were here and were not here, just to gather information and kind of see what everyone needs. So, you know, hopefully everyone can see there's not a lack of help. There's a lot of volunteers. My wife is now running the K-2 soccer practices. Her and I both own two businesses, one in Harwich, one in Dennis, and we sponsor shirts for the kids, so they come home with something. And they were all psyched about them, naturally. So we're very happy about that. And, you know, I think, maybe this is for a later date, but some of the comments by the rec director, there's a lot to pick apart there and a lot to kind of say, like, maybe that's not so true. And I think the biggest one that really kind of hit home for us as business owners of parents of three, to say that it takes six to 12 hours to get this training done for the online signups, you can find that. You can find that in a year. You can find that in one weekend. You know, you give up a Saturday if you're, you know, we're salaried workers. We're business owners. Sometimes you have to do a little bit extra or, you know, carve out the six hours during the day. One person answers the phones. One person gets trained. Switch.
Yeah, just to cut you there, that's probably a better topic for the rec meeting next week, which I plan on attending as well on the liaison to the rec committee.
Great, great. Yeah, I just wanted to give some updates. So, thank you very much. Again, thanks for listening to all of us last, last meeting, and hopefully we can continue to move forward with some of this.
And thank you for putting the time in, too. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. What's the, how come there's not a big line here to talk tonight? I'm waiting. I'm Jenny Hewitt. I'm the library director, and I was here a little over a month ago at the start of the school year to talk about our after-school programs. And I wanted to come and tell you that since then, we've added another program. It's called Pokemon Go, and it's on Thursdays at 3:00. And this is aimed at elementary school students. So they do have to have a parent in the building. They don't have to stay at the program unless they happen to love Pokemon, which is surprising to me, because my son was one of the first generation of Pokemon users, right? And now that's, now they have their own kids. And so some of the parents opting to stay, which is fun, and get to interact with the kids. So I also wanted to comment about the meeting a few weeks ago, just to correct something that one of the speakers said was that Brooksbury Library had a storytime and, but had a pretty good ballet program in the basement. We've never had ballet. I was talking about Howichport Library, which leases a wing of its building to, I think it's Regigard Studio. So it's like a permanent lease, not just meetings or lessons, but that's where they get some income to support themselves. So we've never had ballet, but we do have, on Monday, our youth librarian is in the school all day in the elementary school, doing classroom visits, book talks, and leaving recreational reading in each classroom. And this is different than, we support teachers and the curriculum in other ways, and families and kids working on schoolwork at the library. But this is about getting an interest in reading. And I think you probably heard that the first few years of school, you are learning to read, and after that, you are reading to learn. And if you're not interested in reading and not good in reading, your chances of academic success really fall. So that's the whole point of that, that it's outreach directly to our, to our students in our community. And so that's what she does on Monday. And then, other than that, we have two storytimes a week, one on Tuesday morning. On Thursday morning, it's outside at the parents' request. It's outside in Brooks Park, and that goes on most of the winter. We will bring it in if the weather is bad, but they like it even in the cold, because then they go over to the playground. And, you know, so that's kind of a fun thing. And we have a preschool projects program another day. On Friday mornings, we have a program for homeschoolers, an activity club for homeschoolers. And on Tuesday afternoons, on Tuesday, during the day, I should say, we do a destination imagination program for the homeschoolers in the community. And so after school, added to the Pokemon, we've got a program on Magic the Gathering on Tuesdays. We've got Legos on Wednesdays. We've got Pokemon on Thursdays, followed by food and fun for middle schoolers. And so there's a lot going on. It's all drop-in, all free, so no registration. You know, you can decide that day to come or send your child. One thing I did want to ask for help with is that when, we were very concerned when the middle school regionalized that, you know, kids, we always, they always walked here. You know, I came a year after the renovation in 98, always had a number of kids coming, and that was great. And in fact, I think I might have said this before, but when I interviewed here for the reference librarian position, the previous director asked me, was I married and did I have children? Which you don't ask in an interview, but, but her response was, that's great, you have three children. Now, I really wasn't ready to move. I was just starting to interview, and I thought, wow, what employer wants a single parent with three children? Like, this is awesome. This says something about what they were looking for. And so they've always welcomed kids after school. And so we were concerned, but the middle school, the school system was providing a community bus. It would bring the kids to the libraries and the community center in each town. And we would get 15 to 20 kids every day, and, you know, up to 30 kids, and, you know, depending on, you know, if was basketball practice hadn't started yet, or whatever else was going on. And, and we loved that. And that, last year was a surprise at the start of school, that they could not provide the bus. And I don't believe it was funding, it was a driver, lack of drivers. So this year, new principal at the middle school, and we were told, you know, you know, I guess, oh, this is, this is good, there's going to be a bus. Well, you know, it wasn't. Like, they had to consolidate a lot of bus routes. I think it's unrealistic for us to expect a direct bus again, because I think the population of people that will be drivers is not here. But perhaps structuring it differently, that a route has X number of seats assigned. You're not trying to squeeze kids onto a bus that's already full, and parents are reluctant to do that. So that's really hurt, you know. The numbers have really dropped. And, and that's a shame, because it's a huge community benefit. Again, I know from experience as a single parent, you worry about that. The time when middle schoolers are most at risk is when they're home alone after school, and coming to a nice, safe environment is just something we want to preserve. So we haven't actually been to the school committee yet, because this, we thought it was happening. We thought we were getting one, and then they just get the drivers again. The middle school administration's aware, but I'm just thinking, as it goes on further, it's kind of whether middle schoolers can come and get dropped off at the community center or the library. It's just a nice, a nice benefit and, and something that, like, I would like to see them provide for in the planning of the routes. So, anyway, we have, one announcement I wanted to make was that we have the Halloween parade to Town Hall coming up on Tuesday, the 31st, and it starts at the library at 10:30. And I want to thank all the Town Hall employees, and I guess some staff from other departments are going to be here in the Griffin Room. So it's nice to have everybody embrace the kids like that. It's definitely a fun event. And we also have, for adults, we have three book groups. I won't go into all of them, but I wanted to mention one that we've just started. It's a, it's got a different format. This book group is called Books &amp; More, and, and you can read, watch, and listen to any work that you like on a certain theme. So it's a thematic discussion, and it's just to, just to have something a little different, a little different way to approach things, and maybe include people that aren't, aren't maybe into reading, something they didn't pick out themselves. So we'll have a highlighted book, and then some other suggestions that people can choose from, but really you could pick any, anything you want. And that is on the third Tuesday of the month, starting at 6:30. And, and we also have a weekly nitlick group, and we have the Pen, Pad, and Prompt New Writers Group that started this fall, and that's on Thursday evenings. So I think that's about it, but thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And maybe, Don, maybe the school committee, you're the liaison, right? Maybe you could...
If indeed the school committee has a liaison, they're an elected committee.
To just mention that item to them, maybe to see if there's any kind of...
Jenny knows that was...
It's a little hard at the high budget level, you know, by the time it gets to that, and they could have all good intentions.
Right.
But it depends on the supply. I just think, I think they're not hearing from parents, because I don't know that parents know that they have a voice. And a lot of the parents who used it, probably half of the parents who used it were school choice parents, so that, and I will say this, the middle school offers a lot of grade programs after school. And, you know, so there's that, too. But if you live in Dennis, Yarmouth, or, you know, further west, it's a long round trip to get there and back. And by the time of day, you're trying to save time after school. So to have them come there, it's free. It's just a nice support.
Don?
Jenny knows this. As a parent who was a consumer of that program, I could go as a parent easily, because that was a terrific drop-in. You guys were wonderful.
Yeah.
It presented a context. The kids had something to do, and if you gave them the freedom, if they didn't want to do something specific, they were at least in a cocooned environment. It's sad that they dropped it.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's a reality, but how do we fix that? How do we, you know, get around that?
Yeah, it'd be good if you could just bring it up, and then, you know, we can follow up as well. But thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, the next, our public comments and announcements, next...
Madam Chair, I apologize. We do have a member who is going to make an announcement. She may have been waiting until you went through the list, but we have our Youth and Family Services Director to make an announcement.
Yeah, sure, that's...
And if I could, as she's coming up to make the announcement, we may want to ask her the decorations that are now visible at Main Street. There's a very clever addition.
I did just notice those, yeah.
Supporting the Cultural Council and Cara Moweney's work over at the 204 for sure. Ashley Simmington, Director of Youth and Family Services. So I'll start there. So I don't know if any of you have seen, heard of, or seen. We use them a lot in counseling, but they're usually a sheet or a poster that says, how are you feeling today? And it's a bunch of feeling faces. Works really well with kids, because they don't have the vocabulary, so they'll just kind of look at the face and point this one. So there are pumpkins decorated with feeling faces outside of Elbow House. So feel free to pick out how you're feeling. Here tonight to let you know about something that's happening at the county level, and also ask for your help in getting the word out there. The Barnstable County Department of Human Services has obtained funding to hire a third-party assessment organization to conduct a children's behavioral baseline needs assessment, which is really exciting. So what their goal is, is to kind of document Capewide, all 15 towns, what the behavioral needs are of kids and teens, 21 and under is kind of their age demographic for that, what the available services are, and where the gaps are. So we're looking to kind of get all of that information put together in one place, that then, you know, that data can be used to inform program decisions, hopefully get additional services to start or move from one area to another where they're really needed. A lot of support services stop in Hyannis, don't come down this far, or even out to P-Town in the Outer Cape. So they're kicking this off with community forums that are happening in a couple of weeks. The one that's going to be covering this region is actually going to be held at Cape Cod Tech on, let's see, October 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30. You can attend either in person at the tech or online via Zoom. They are asking people to register. The flyer that's out has QR codes that you just scan to be able to register for whichever night you'd like to go to. These are kind of the start of what's going to be a months-long process of gathering all of that information. The more voices that are heard, the more needs we identify, the better we can target programming. From the county level, what they're going to also be doing is using this information to go up to the state level and get a little bit more equity in the funding that's coming down the pipeline for a lot of these programs that are kind of not coming over the bridge right now.
And just a question, I'm assuming that these are being distributed in the schools, too?
Yes, these are being distributed in the schools, community partners and organizations across Capewide. Again, all 15 towns being asked to participate in this. There are posters up at Elbow House, on, you know, Facebook websites, things like that. If people have questions, the contact information for the person at the county level, her name is Mandy Speakman, who is able to field those. People are also welcome to contact me, and I'll answer what I can or pass along what I, what I can't.
That's great.
Awesome.
And then, do you think that it's possible, after these workshops are held, to come back and let us know what you're finding in this area in terms of, because I think that's helpful to this board?
Yeah. What I can certainly do, so with these, the community forums are kind of the, the start to this process. Again, it's going to be months-long. They're hoping to gather as much information from providers, community organizations, agencies, schools, as well as parents, grandparents, the whole nine yards. So we can certainly kind of come back with some preliminary data or whatever gets, gets released, absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Public comments and announcements. A, next Select Board meeting will be Monday, October 23rd, 2023. B, next office hours of Mary Anderson and Jeff Handler will be Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at 204 Sisson Road. And Ashley just spoke with us on Youth and Family, so thank you. Then we're going to pull the minutes on the consent agenda, just because we have multiple spelling errors we need to correct, so we'll hold those till next week. So Jeff, if you could...
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the resignation of Mary Ann Campagna from the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. I move that we accept a memorial bench donation from Joel and Christine Berman, trustees of the Berman Family Trust. I move that we accept a memorial bench donation from Raymond and Jeannie M. Mongilio. And I move that we vote to appoint Emily Broody as the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee, term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Michael, seconded. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don, sorry.
Yeah, and before we move on, because I'd like to see the agenda say this in the future, accept the resignation and send a letter of gratitude for the service.
Of course.
We'll do that. And Joe, can we just make sure that that gets noted? New business. A, vote to use ImageCast precinct tabulators, beginning with the March 5, 2024 Presidential Preference Primary Election, and continuing for future elections thereafter pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34. Do, does anyone need more info?
No, there's a pre-made motion on page 19 of...
Yeah, from Emily, right. So do you have that?
Yeah, so moved.
No, you gotta read it.
I move that we vote to use ImageCast precinct tabulators, beginning with the March 5, 2024 Presidential Preference Primary Election, and continuing for future elections thereafter pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, 34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If we can rewind a little bit. Are we reading off the agenda?
No, he's reading, you're reading from here, though.
I'm reading from this.
Okay, in the packet, on page 19, there's a pre-made motion with a little more language in that from the town clerk that she wishes we would vote.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what she did.
Page 19. A lot of the information was in there, but it stopped short of where we should be.
Okay.
All right, it's right there.
Yeah, it's on, it's on page 19.
I'll do it if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
As required pursuant to Mass, will we remove the second off the last motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the motion?
Motion is removed.
Okay, thank you. As required pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34, I move that the town of Harwich vote to use the ImageCast precinct tabulators, beginning with the March 5, 2024 Presidential Preference Primary, and thereafter, in all future local and state and federal preliminary, primary, and general elections held in the town of Harwich, and with that, to discontinue the use of AccuVote optical scan tabulators.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
No problem.
Five-oh.
And there are two originals to be signed for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to appoint the treasurer collector role as parking clerk pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 20A and a half.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you got...
You trying, you trying to beat the over and under on the time out of here?
All right. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm going for seven.
Just to inform the board that after this action, what this is really intended to do is to correct an error in the process. So the parking hearing clerks will then be appointed by the treasurer collector role. Our town clerk and our assistant town clerk have conveyed their willingness to continue on. This just does it in accordance with the law.
Now, my question, if I may, Madam Chair, so we already have a plan going forward of who's actually going to do it, which is complying with the law.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
I did say...
I never said it before.
Five, five-zero.
Four-zero.
Four-zero.
Oh, four, sorry. Yeah, making up Mary. All right, so that's, we've got that. And contracts, I mean, this is seriously the fastest meeting I think we've really had in months.
Want to slow it down?
No, not really.
I don't think so.
Contracts. Vote to approve a contract with Deere &amp; Company for a ballfield mower in the amount of $87,806.18. Joe?
So moved.
I have to say where the money's coming from.
Well, does anyone, yeah, does anyone want to have any further information from Joe before we take a vote?
So this is an action related to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, specifically Article 16, which was capital. The article provides funding of $75,000. The additional money is coming directly from the operating budget for an appropriate use. The equipment that we're purchasing was purchased through the statewide contract, and everything has been approved from the finance and administration levels. I would recommend approval of the contract.
Okay.
So just to, for the public, this 75,000 is coming from the article, and the $12,806.18 is coming through the operating budget, in specific amounts.
Okay, I'm still so moved.
All right, so...
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And vote to approve a contract with Lawrence Lynch Corporation for the Brooks Park pickleball court expansion in the amount of $240,283.77. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may. This one, again, is, actually, this was the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. It was Article 36. This is for the expansion of the basketball court and construction of a new pickleball court. It was a procurement that was done in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30, 39M, which also requires prevailing wage. The RFP process elicited two bids, and Lawrence Lynch was the responsive, responsible, and low bidder. And that process was done late September, so I would recommend that the board approve this. The full funding of this is, again, coming from Article 36 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and it comes in under the budget of the article.
Thank you.
Or below the budget, I should say.
Any other? Don, did you have a comment? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
That one, we didn't have a motion.
Oh, I thought you seconded it.
I didn't have time to so move it. Joe jumped in.
Oh, you didn't. All right, sorry. Go ahead.
I move that we approve a contract with Lawrence Lynch Corporation for the Brooks Park pickleball court expansion in the amount of $240,283.77.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I could just go back to discussion for one second?
Sure.
Last week, there was somebody before us that talked about, and I remember now because of the pickleball courts, a broken piece of equipment in the kids' playground in Brooks Park. And I know there's been some follow-up on the other part of that conversation with the town administrator and the rec director. Can we find out what's broken and what it will take to get fixed?
So, yep.
A broken piece of the children's equipment at Brooks Park.
So I have some info on that, because I attended the rec committee meeting, and it was actually Art Bowden who attended as well to talk to the rec committee about that broken piece of equipment, and they were going out to assess it. Joe, town administrator's report?
So I have some contracts to announce, and then some new appointments. First, to follow up on the construction, there's a separate action going on regarding pickleball courts. This is for East Coast Seal Coating. It was a resurfacing project, separate side, obviously, from the construction area. This was a, an article under our 2023 Annual Town Meeting, specifically Article 32. The article total was for $110,000. However, with the bid process under the construction bid process, the responsive, responsible bidder was the winning bidder of the two, East Coast Seal Coating Incorporated, and their price came in at $64,860. So again, two bids, they were the low responsive, responsible bidder, and well below the money available from Town Hall. Secondly, we have a contract that was executed for our website upgrade. Again, this goes back to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, specifically under the capital article, through our Director of Information Technology. So the town is looking to update and redesign our website. We have a sole source procurement for Civic Plus LLC, and the determination was approved on the sole source. The contract amount was $48,712.95, and the appropriated amount was $50,000, so that came under the dollar amount available.
Any idea on the timeframe for when that, those upgrades will be made, you know?
So I can work with Sarah on an update on that. It's, as you may recall, she had a very comprehensive and aggressive capital project, so this is part and parcel of that. But I can follow up with her on the project plan.
Thanks. Don?
Yeah, and it's something...
Yeah, and it's something that's interested me for a while, and I know that people have asked me during the past week. Just because a vendor is doing it doesn't mean you're throwing good money after bad if you're giving them back another contract, because there were modules that we didn't purchase. And this is absolutely designed to fill in, because we got the base level, but we didn't really get all the bells and whistles that would make the site work better.
No, and we, you know, just recently added GIS and all those things, so, I mean, it does need to be cleaned up.
It has to do with the ease of filling out things, deploying different fields by only filling them out once. They had that ability, but we haven't been using it.
Any other comments? Thank you, Joe.
Couple more updates?
Yeah.
Next one is a contract for fixed seating replacement. This is at 204 Sisson Road in the auditorium area. This again goes back to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, the capital project under Article 16. If I remember correctly, the article dollar amount was in excess of $85,000. We estimated the cost to be $75,000, and fortunately for us, it came in under the estimated. So, the full dollar amount of $70,981 was awarded to Robert H. Lord Company, and that is for the replacement of auditorium seating. Again, this was tied to the capital plan this past year. And the town also relied upon a cooperative purchasing group, which is where the, I think, the dollar amount comes in, so beneficial to the town. And then, lastly, I just have some announcements.
Dawn had a question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because the packet has two different numbers. It is the $70,981, because the following page says actual cost, $71,062.
According to the memorandum and the dollar amount...
No, the procurement checklist says the actual cost is 71. I'm just verifying.
Sure, I just, if I could complete my sentence. The memo and the contract say $70,981, so that is the correct number.
Thank you. You have anything else?
I guess I would ask, what's the difference? Why does the procurement checklist say one and the other one says the other?
I think, so that...
Not a big deal, but what is the mistake?
I don't think it's a mistake. The procurement checklist, the first page, is the pre-procurement, and so, that was the dollar amount we were anticipating on the state contract.
Okay.
So, using the state contract usually gets a lower number than that.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything, brother?
Yep, just some appointments. I don't mean to say just some appointments. We're very excited to have some changes to staff in a positive way, and some adds to staff. So, a change to staff would be that Andrew Souza, who was our senior heavy equipment operator in the DPW department, applied for and was granted the role of dockhand at the Harbor Master Department. Great employee, great loss to DPW, but a great gain for the Harbor Master for sure. Andrew has acquitted himself very well in the town here for the last seven years. He's got a great background that fits perfectly with that role, so I think he'll fit in nicely with John, Michelle, Bill, and Don Januzzi. So, we congratulate him, even though we miss him on the DPW side.
That's great.
Kaylee Trudeau has been hired as executive assistant in the Building and Conservation Departments. You may recall, that was the joint position that was created at this last town meeting, and she is set to start, or should have started, last week. So, great to have Kaylee on board. And then, last but not least, we have Mr. Robert Popo. He's joining us through the highway department, or, excuse me, public works department, but is going to be the custodian. I believe he is going to join the regular ranks of the custodial group, not necessarily for community center. But it's great to have Mr. Popo join us, and he was scheduled to start next week.
It's great. It's great to be finally getting some, some different voices.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Dawn, Selectmen's Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in looking over the minutes from last meeting that did wind up being correct, Michael had asked for something that I'm interested in getting to, the jurisdiction from our lawyer concerning who sets fees relative to rec. and youth commission, whether they have the final authority. And I don't really want to hear it from them. I'd like to hear, you know, in terms of what our lawyer says in terms of jurisdiction.
Right, and I, and I think Michael had indicated he wanted to have that on the agenda, but I wanted to wait till Mary was back, because I thought it was appropriate for all five of us.
And that's all I was saying, so the public knew that we haven't dropped it.
No, certainly not. But I think all five of us should be present for that discussion. Anything else? Michael?
Yeah, and that would just add waive fees to that, and I know that was part of my email, so I'm sure. And I know Joe's been working on it through the clerk and where else.
Yeah.
The other one is related back to 204 Sisson Road, and I did ask for an update, and I think you're waiting for the same, the next meeting.
Right.
But I would like to get an overall idea, and I really would like that before pickleball moves back in there for the winter. I know the board unanimously said last year, by way of consensus, before they move back in, we need to address the rates. So, I'd like to make sure that that's on sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I think that will prob, I'm going to meet tomorrow, because Mary's still away, to set the agenda. And so, we talked about holding till Mary came back.
Thank you.
Anything else? Michael?
No, I'm good.
Jeff?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I just want to say that it was a great promotion event at the Harwich Police Department. A great turnout, and watching Arum get promoted, and Tyler Remedy, sorry, Arum Goshgarian, promoted. It was wonderful to see, and great to see others get to move on to retire, and I'm jealous of John Sullivan. And also, just wanted to say on a personal note, you know, I'm part of the Witches on the Water. We had an event a couple of weeks ago. Michael generously donated a beautiful paddleboard. And also, the witches paddled again on Saturday, but, yeah, I wasn't able to attend, but they paddled. And my understanding is there was 15 or 20 of them out there, and we raised roughly $20,000. Nothing's been finalized yet, but the Beneficiary is Capabilities, another wonderful organization that does great things in our community. So, that's it. That's all I have. And I just want to say 6:37, I think that's all right.
Not until I say move to adjourn.
Great job at that event. Julie, great job at that event. Inside winner on the paddleboard.
I did that already. Second.
So, we adjourned.